The next item is the presentation of the P-CRIME Consulting Environmental Health and Safety Contract for 2020 through 2024. Coming forward to make the presentation is Mr. Jeff Bergman, District Construction, and Mr. Mike Carriello, Chief Operations Officer. At the conclusion of the presentation, the recommendation is for the services proposal for a five-year term of $208,500. The contract will be included in the Board of Education packet for approval on October 24th, 2019. The amount is included in the capital improvements budget. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy Four, Colon, Sixty, and Four, Colon, One-Fifty. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Board. We wanted to bring this forward. This actually, we were bringing P-CRIME forward, they're our environmental consultant. Our environmental consultant are the folks that basically are responsible for finding any of the bad stuff in the building. So it's asbestos, might be other things. So their job is really to work with us. They don't actually do the work, but they're the ones that scope out the work and then they will actually help us put together the appropriate documentation to get a contractor and to actually remove the hazardous materials. So the reason this every year comes up and it's not included in the normal architect work, which typically that's all boggled separately, is because of the liability that's involved in this. So the district typically, it's easier for us to assume that liability for both this work and then for the removal work. If we didn't do this, the general contractor, in this case, the construction manager would assume much more liability. Their insurance wouldn't really allow them to cover it the way we can cover it. So that's why this comes separately. So we've been using P-CRIME for nine years, and based on the board policy, we felt that we had to go to the market, and we did do that. But in order not to, in order to try to level the playing field, we took a sample scope of work, we assumed a 15-day scope of work, and we solicited bids, proposals from various vendors. We actually had three that responded, one that did not respond. And based on that scope of work, P-CRIME was much, much less expensive than the others we looked at. The reason I'm saying it's a level playing field, P-CRIME's been with us for a long time, so they really know the building, so it wasn't really fair to just, you know, give them a scope of work, because they have an inside track on it. Again, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect way to do it, but it was a way we felt that we could level the playing field. As it turned out, they were significantly cheaper than anyone else that chose to respond to our bid. Let's see. We wanted to bring them on for throughout the scope of the facilities master plan, so that's why you see it's from, we're actually starting with the 2020 work that's coming up this coming June, throughout the entire scope of the Project One work, and then a year following that. That's the 2020 to the 2024 score years. And the costs that are listed in here in the contract are not-to-exceed costs. You can see, if you actually looked at the proposal, which I believe is on page two, it's not in here? It's not in this one? Okay. Should've been in the packet. The proposal that was put out there, actually, they broke the, there's an extra $43,000 that has to do with the demolition of the south cafeteria. That is above and beyond the work that they would normally be doing for us on a yearly basis, and that's why that was broken out separately. So you see the normal, the normal usual work, the work is, is $30,000, $3,000 contingency. The $43,000 is for looking at that south cafeteria. You might imagine a demolition is going to involve a lot more work, and they basically bit that out separately. These are not-to-exceed numbers, so these are estimates of what the work will entail. They will bill us for the work that is done. Okay? Other questions?
Anyone have any questions? Tom?
Yes. So you have a specific, the south cafeteria. So does that assume then that all of the other demolition or other activities associated with what's currently on the radar is included in what is presented up in front of us?
There, yeah. Do you want to take that?
Yes, it does. And in the year 2020, it's broken down where the capital improvement is separated from the Project One, because the Project One was so involved that year with the tearing down of the building. Can you hear me? Okay. So they're at, the capital improvement portion of this, $33,000, that includes a $3,000 allowance, and then there's $40,500 additional in that year for the Project One, because it's so extensive in that particular year. And also, as you move forward into 2021, they're in the design process with us as we start going through the other portions of the building that have to be taken care of. They're already in the design process and working on drawings to develop a bid package for the next, that coming year. So it's, it's a very heavy year for them. That's why that particular year is, has the extra $40,000. Does that answer your question?
I believe so. The only difference is you referred to it as, you said Project One, which is a little more expansive, and you said the demolition in the south cafeteria. So are they the same?
Yes, they are.
The bulk of the work happening is, that involves them is really the demolition of the south cafeteria.
So anybody have any questions? Jackie, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So next item is the presentation of the EMOJA contract. Making this presentation is Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent, Mike Carriello, Chief Operations Officer. At the conclusion of the presentation, the recommendation is that the committee, the whole recommend approval of the contract with EMOJA through the Development Corporation for a one-year term for a cost of $25,150 at the regular October 24th board meeting. This item is included in the Strategic Plan Budget labeled under EMOJA's support, if I might, with regards to the information about substitutes. That's a separate line item, and that's an approximate cost, which is why it was not included in the EMOJA cost.
Still could be spent.
This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Two, Transformation teaching and learning, and District Policy Four, Colon, Fifty, I mean, Six, Colon, Fifty, and Six, Colon, Six-Five.
So based upon the feedback we received from the board at last month's meeting, we included some additional items in the cover memo. We put information in there about the work that was done with the demolition. We detailed that, those items out specifically. In addition, we also included, one second there, more detail on what those actual, what the actual work would be done, and finally, we put in some information about some accountability, measurement, and deliverables. So since we've talked about this before, I know we've had some questions, and we would be happy to field any additional questions you might have at this time.
Let me just add, in the introduction, a quick note too, that Lyndon Parker, of course, listed she could be here to talk to everybody about this, but she's at a conference at the moment for greatest conversations, and so she's unable to make it.
Anybody have any questions?
One, just, I don't know if this is off the top of your head, if you know, but in the background, we're talking about to support our goal of by June of 2020, increasing the percentage of students who feel that they're welcome and belong at school to 60% across all demographic groups. If you don't know it offhand, fine, but I don't know what those are myself, and currently, where that number's come from, to get to this.
Yeah, so thank you for that. We conducted a survey last year. We were, at that time, partnering with Hanover Research, and we did a culture and climate survey. And for both welcoming and welcoming environment and feeling a sense of belonging in the organization, the targets that we got were 52 and 55% respectively. And so after some conversation this summer, we decided that with our efforts, we wanted to set a realistic, yet, you know, up target from that number. We had the 60%. I want to remind the board, though, that we are not partnering with Hanover this year, partly because we are unable to disaggregate Hanover's data demographically, and so we don't have a baseline for that across all of our demographic groups. That's why the 60% was set kind of as just a target for this year with our initial efforts, and we'll be able to give a much more nuanced target after we disaggregate that data by the end of this year. So both surveys will be given at the same rough time, so we're talking about 12 months in a year.
And 52 and 55, and those were successive years you're referencing?
No, for those two questions. So there was one question, I left feeling a sense of belonging, and then also...
Safe. What's it called, about the safe?
Safe, and then a welcoming environment. So they were two separate environments, right? This is a welcoming environment, and I feel like I belong here. Those are two separate things, I can say, and safe, belong, and safe here. Those are both separate items, and so they were 52 and 55.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gina? I know I keep harping on this same question, I feel like, pretty regularly, but at the end of this year, then, how many of the staff will actually be trained in utilizing restorative practices based on this?
Gina, I don't have a number on that, but as I'm looking up, I mean, I could quickly kind of get a rough idea of numbers. I mean, the entire English department, all of our TCT leaders, as well as our deans and the work they're doing, we're easily over 50 at that point. So we'll be, and you include the other people who do the advanced circle training, it's probably in the 70 to 80 range. I can work on getting a more precise figure, but we're roughly in that range.
That's it. I do want to add that while those are the people who will be trained, more people will be exposed to it, because the TCTs and the circle leaders will be trained to do circles when they're doing their TCT meetings on the Lake Shore Atlantics. So that will impact everyone that's in the TCT. And so while they, like I said, while they may not be in the actual training, every staff member, certified staff member, because we still have to figure out something for all support that, will be exposed to the concept of restorative justice.
And that kind of led to my question about the 60% also, that if we're not, if 70 of the staff members are utilizing this and implementing it, what you're doing, you're looking at a 60% for all, overall, of welcoming and belonging. I don't know if 60% of the students are actually going to get this. Well, with the numbers, with the number of people that are implementing it and using it, is 60% a realistic number of...
Yeah, we freely admit that it's a bit of a blunt target that we set for ourselves, based off of the survey data that we were able to pull last year. And so as we got together and we knew that, based, I mean, really because of what you're describing here, we wanted to set ourselves a target that was an improvement, right? Up 5%, up 7, 8%, from those. But really, once we're able to take a look at exactly what these practices are after next year's of training, and we're able to look at this aggregated data, I think we're going to do a much better job of being able to say, look, it's reasonable to see these, you know, this type of growth. We also just last year had baseline data, right? So we don't even have a real data trend in front of us.
So a comment I would make is, one of the reasons that the English department was brought on is that every student, almost every student takes an English class. So if you want the best bang for your buck with a division actually getting exposure to some of these techniques and bringing them into the classroom, that was the reason they were one of the groups that was brought on board. I mean, not to say whether that's going to make that much of a difference is unclear, but the idea was to actually start getting it into the classroom immediately, and that was why that division was chosen to be part of the...
I am grateful to see that. Thank you for that, that's helpful to know. And I am grateful to see that it's not only discipline and girls that we're looking at, so that rounded it out in a way that seems more appropriate. Thank you.
Can I add to that, too? I just want to clarify that I don't want the board to think that, or anybody to think that, that was a new target that we came up with after we had a conversation last month. This was part of our strategic plan goals beginning of the year. So we're just, I think, clarifying this is linked to those strategic purposes. Thank you.
So whether or not they meet the target, is there a process in place to evaluate their delivery of services to see correlations between if they're hitting or not hitting that target? And are they giving you any metrics to evaluate them by, or are they saying, these are things you should expect, et cetera, et cetera, so that we could review whether or not the performance was actually up to what our expectations were?
So it's...
I just want to add for clarification, when you say their performance, you mean the training?
Yeah, the training.
Because we believe the implementation and accountability is on that someplace.
So, yeah, our theory of action here is that restorative practices are going to lead to the outcomes that we talked about, right? And so when we go to practitioners who know a lot more about implementing restorative practices at schools, this is what they recommend. So are they, we are not, when we have asked them to link their exact practices to accountables that we are accountable for as a school, right? Outcomes that we are accountable, but with, so with that said, we don't have those specific types of things from them. We haven't asked them for that, but what your question really points towards is our responsibility, and we will have to do that. So we could go through this and say, look, maybe they'll, so hypothetically, right, the work with the TCT leaders, first, I'm making this up, right, but we will be a feel for, look, the work with the TCT leaders didn't really take off, because they were working on something that they saw as really curricular oriented, and EMOJA was approaching this from a much more affective way, and we needed to do work in the school to try to imagine those TCT spaces as more ways to deal with the, you know, the social-emotional. So that's an evaluation that we're going to have to do as we go through. And so what we're doing to monitor that is kind of twofold. We have, for each of these trainings, we have a professional development evaluation process that we have in place. That's both quantitative, just on a Likert scale, and also open door for feedback from those. We'll be able to use those to make kind of predictions about how this goes, and we'll just make the best choices we can, because I'm sure you've mentioned it here, but we'll have a lot of that information when this is all said and done.
I do want to add, though, that based upon the training, there is an understanding that once staff has been trained, if we begin to use those strategies with fidelity, we should be able to see, based on our data, a change in not only practice of our staff, but also the actions and the responses of our students. And so that, that becomes incumbent on, that's what we set that metric, matrix at, but based upon the training, we do have a concept of what that should look like if we're implementing it with fidelity.
And so we have a way to evaluate whether our...
You can put some...
And so we have a way to evaluate whether we are implementing with fidelity. I think that's, that's the key to the systems change that you're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Tom, or Craig, or Jackie?
Gina asked the question that I have had, and I continue to wonder how we, beyond the survey of students, which we don't, I mean, our rates of how many students respond varies, but how we're really looking at, as I've always said, our kids spend the majority of their time in the classroom, so how do we track if, you know, restorative practices are being used in a way that can change culture? And I'm not, I'm not clear yet if, if the information we have allows us to move in that direction, given the metrics that are talked about have to do with survey data of students.
I think that's kind of my question also, is, like, we, we know how many, we know how many teachers will be doing it, how will we know if they're doing it consistently, regularly, and like Dr. Booth Adams said, with fidelity, like, over a course of time, like, is there a way? I know in, in some restorative justice systems, there is some tracking and, like, evaluating in a way that just like, is like a touch base with the teachers to see, how many circles did you do this term with this month, or, you know, and so that, I'm curious about those kinds of pieces.
Yeah, there, I guess there are two ways, thank, this is, it's good to think about. So we're thinking about two different things here, potentially, okay, that came to my mind, would be, one would be actual observations, right? And then the other, of course, would be just feedback from teachers about exactly the type you just named, which is a different type of kind of survey and feedback response than, how did the PD work for you, what's your intent, and so on. So, yeah, we can, we can bring that feedback back to our group and see if we can develop some of that.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the other pieces I just want to add is, I would imagine that in the training with EMOJA, they do talk about how this can be used for curricular items as well, and not just, you know, social-emotional relationship.
It was a clumsy example on my part, I was just trying to, I was there to point.
Okay.
Just make sure I understand. So, you know, when I think about this, and, you know, we're all much more experienced educators than I am, but I think about, we have training, and training gives us new strategies, and then we go practice those strategies in the classroom when we do them, and then we get results, which we hope are causal to the strategy. So when we did this in manufacturing facilities, we always had measures of the activities, and so that we knew the activities were actually getting implemented effectively. And if, and I think that's what I'm hearing here from other people, and that's where my head is, is over the course of the year, how do you, how do we monitor, how do you monitor that activities are being done? And that's, that's the question in my head, I'm just trying to, because I think it's the same question at first.
Yeah, I think it is, and so I'll respond the same. We'll bring that back on, we have a team meeting on Monday, I think I referenced that too, earlier, but we will bring it back, and we'll look at this, and we'll update the board as we move forward.
And then as a board member, honestly, I don't care that, I mean, in terms of to see any of that, I just want to know that the process is in place.
Yeah, well, that's...
One of my goals, two continued goals, is to report out several times a year on the work we're doing with EMOJA, and so that could be a part of our next presentation.
All right, thank you.
We're now at policy, which is the item for Board of Education Goals. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Five.
Okay. All right, so we have been working on our, our goals for this current school year. We've discussed it a little bit, but I would like to open it up for additional conversation. I don't know if folks want to go through sort of one by one and discuss them, or if people want to have a more global conversation about the goals in general. Why don't we start with number one, then? So ongoing monitoring of goals and activities that the Strategic Plan is prioritized by the superintendent for the 2019, 2020 school year. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that goal? Number two, monitor implementation of racial equity policy. Develop accountability framework that outlines outcomes to be monitored and timeline for accomplishing outcomes.
I have a question. If I might, is, just for clarity, is the board developing the accountability framework that we're to, sorry about that, that we're to implement? That one wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, so the way I understood that, because I was a big proponent of this, was what the board will do is identify some of the big outcomes we want to see accomplished, whether it's, you know, let's take one that we've all agreed on, elimination of the statistically meaningful correlation between race, ethnicity, or any other innate characteristic, and academic performance. We want to see that eliminated. So that's the outcome we want to identify, that's the framework, and so the time period from getting that accomplished by the board, say, five years, seven years, whatever, then we will look for measurable progress towards that goal in the interim period, understanding that you can't achieve an outcome like that without at least one full cohort of students completely moving through a reform system, right? So that's, that's what I meant when I talked about that.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the case.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fair.
But I think, you know, Joylyn's comment was the same as mine, which is, so I'm in agreement with that, but then the question, this is okay, so how are we going to, how are we going to do that as a board?
Right, like, does the board develop the accountability framework, or is that something we work in partnership with the superintendent? Like, that's what I'm not clear on. Where does that framework come from? The developing accountability framework?
The framework is actually relatively simple in this case. It's, here's the outcome that's to be achieved by the district, the elimination of this correlation. Here's the time period in which it's supposed to be achieved. So there's your framework, that's done. Now then the administration reports back...
But is that the framework that comes from equity policy? Is that what you mean? Those two pieces are directly from equity policy?
Right, so we are now implementing the equity policy, and we're looking for ways to hold all of us accountable for achieving the outcomes we want. So we have to set time periods, and we have to say which measurable by which time period. And then the administration reports to us on incremental progress and things that they are seeing through the implementation of the different strategies we're using to see whether or not the needle's moving. So we have a timeframe in which to hold them accountable, they have a fair amount of time to accomplish the goal, we can manage expectations, but we're still monitoring whether or not we are moving towards achieving that goal.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear as well, because as a part of the procedure development, those 12 components, the policy charges us to develop a metric for each of those 12 components, that we will be reporting out routinely. What I hear you saying is the overarching broad goal of where the board wants us to be five years out, correct?
Five years out, seven years out, I think, in this case.
Ralph, can you speak until I can...
I think in this, in the specific metric, seven years is a more rational metric, but yes. So, and then it would be all just, the board's role is really at that broad goal, and whether or not the broad goal is being attained within the time period we set for attainment. The development of the implementation procedures and the sub-metrics that you were talking about, that's an administrative responsibility, right?
Does anybody have any questions after that? Number two. Yes, I can read out.
I'm still on that one. Going back to, going back to Ralph's statement, in order for the board to do that, there has to be some end-up discussion, whether that's tonight or at a future board meeting, in order to make, to develop that.
Absolutely.
Agreed. Is this something that we think we would want to do, maybe a board retreat? Do we have any thoughts, and whether we want to make this a standalone discussion, or do we want to make it part of our...
That's just, that's a discussion among the board. I just wanted to point that out, that at some point in time, there has to be time carved out, whether it is in a board meeting, or whether it's in a retreat atmosphere, with the time dedicated to do that.
I think that's, that's completely fair, and in fact, it should, it should be one where that's the whole focus of the, the time spent together, whether it's a regularly scheduled board meeting or a special meeting held in order to retreat fashion. So you don't want to be distracted while we're talking about these things, and we want to have the opportunity to have an open dialogue with the administration and whomever else is appropriate from within the building for ensuring that what we're doing for establishing these broad goals is something that makes sense.
Would it, would it, sorry, would it make sense in that case, it's a question, would it make sense for a couple members of the board to meet with a couple members of the administration and create a, a framework or a structure that could be then discussed at a retreat?
Yes.
Because rather than it just being pre-form, I think that would be a helpful way to implement this.
Okay. Dr. Moore, did you want to chime in on this point? I know you're having trouble hearing.
I can partially chime in for the every third word that I heard. I heard that we're needing to spend some dedicated time, and Joylyn's request and Ralph's comment as well, and then Craig suggesting that we do maybe have a couple of board members with a couple of administrators. The only concern I have about... of administrators. The only concern I have about that is that it not be, that we still have to have a conversation prior to that about what, in terms of the broad goal and kind of the, not the metrics that we want to have, but what we're anticipating to see over the course of, you know, time, and to Ralph's point of a full cycle of students, there's also intermittent things that we can about, and I think that that's what needs to happen for clarity. So I think that dedicated time, and that may roll into some of our other goals in terms of how we're committing time and, you know, having retreats that deal specifically with how we're looking at racial equity.
So it makes some sense that around the need to maybe have a standalone meeting dedicated to this?
Yes.
Number three, board development on accomplishing racial equity goals. As per our responsibility to view our work through a racial equity lens, we will work collectively through ongoing discussions to deepen our understanding of race and the effects of systemic and institutional racism, implicit bias, and white privilege in our school community. We do individual work to increase racial literacy. Commit to ongoing relationship-building and partnership in understanding our role in effecting system change and modeling a culture of community. This is, there's a lot, there's a lot here. So, is there, does anybody have any initial comments, or do you want to maybe break this into pieces by bullet point, perhaps?
Dr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, the book that each board member received, isn't that tied to the accomplishment of this goal in heightening the board's level of knowledge and commitment around racial equity?
Partially. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got a message. This was not a valid signal. Partially, but it also is requiring us to think about future, whether it's using our consultant that we use in the past, Stacy, Gibson, or if we decide to move in a different direction, but dedicating time to talk about if our goal with our strategic plan is to view things, our work through a racial equity lens, how are we individually and as a board equipped and committed to making that happen? And it does require, you know, perhaps more readings that we can discuss, but also, I think, some dedicated time. And my hope is that we think about a retreat that has to do with our board work that is away from the school, it's still an open meeting, but in a setting that, I'm thinking it's going to be a Saturday, that we put time to start doing this work, and that we dedicate time regularly at every meeting so that we can start asking questions and have some type of rubric for making sure that we are doing our work through that racial equity.
So one of the thoughts I have, and I was initially reading this when I came through earlier today, I agree that the racial work, racial equity work is incredibly important, and I am all for doing retreats around it. I just want to make sure that the wording that we're using though is not alienating any parts of our community who might not be as far along their racial equity path as others. So I want to make sure that we're trying to bring others along with us and kind of do this work sort of not just as a board, but also in conjunction with our community. Matt, do you have any?
I think it's a good point that you make there, and so maybe to the degree that we can have retreats that are as interactive as possible and engage, is that, that's my thought as you say that. So I think that's a good idea, that the seven people on this board will change over time, two years at a time, and so it's important to have a speech that's broader than the board. So, I agree.
I'm curious about the alienating language. Which pieces might be alienating parts of our community?
So I'm just thinking about some of the recent, where we've had an Oak Park over language, and I just, I want to make sure that as we're doing this work, that we're not further fracturing our community, but instead trying to bring it together. And so that, I just am trying to be sensitive to that, having sort of watched that erupt recently, and a lot of the fear and anger frankly that it brings up for people. While that may be understandable, I want to, I also think that we will get a lot farther if we end the work, if we are doing the work as a community and not just in our silo as board members. Does that make sense?
That's totally good. I'm just curious which language specifically might cluster.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Yeah, so specifically the institutional racism, implicit bias, white privilege, and not, my feeling is that people are not necessarily, don't really understand those terms, I mean, larger members of our community. And so I think that we need to be clear that this is not about carving up a piece of pie, but really about moving together in a work as a collective.
I guess I get to your point. So, one thing we made it clear we were doing when we went down this road across Harlem Avenue, was we put language in our goals that said our equity initiative was designed to create an excellent and welcoming educational atmosphere for all our students, so that there was no parent who could feel that it was a zero-sum game happening at the school board level, or something was being done to take away from Group A to benefit Group B. And that's really not how equity work is done anyway, but it's not how most of the world is trained, not how equity work is done. And so they will look at language, and if language does appear to be divisive rather than uniting, we may not have the opportunity to reach them and explain to them what the equity work really is and what these concepts really mean, or, so that's the challenge, right? The community at large hasn't received training. Most won't. And we need to bring the community at large along, because any parent is going to look at anything we do and how it impacts their kid. That's how any parent will look at it first. And so, we, as a school board, and I've heard nothing contrary to this since I've joined the school board, are committed to ensuring all our children that attend this school are welcome, have the opportunity given from the school to them to achieve the maximum they can academically based on their skill sets. And we have to make sure somehow that broad message comes out as part of our equity work.
I don't want us to.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question to respond to the concerns, I guess, is that the work that the board does, which will be in an open meeting, is modeling the expectations we have of our community, and talking about race will never be comfortable in a way that it's going to be disrupt some feelings and bring up some feelings, but we're talking about doing it as we've, as a part of the, you know, the mission. So when we talk about a racial equity lens, we're necessarily talking about race. And I don't know how we, it's a discussion about racial equity literacy, which necessarily means we're talking about, excuse me, racism and bias and white privilege. So, this is one of the things that is going to come up, the concerns about those that perhaps aren't as far along, or are we, you know, setting ourselves up. But part of the reason that I did suggest those chapters in the book is that this is the time for us to lead as board members, and it's not siloed, but modeled. That is how I have been interpreting this. And I think that we cast a racial equity policy, and we have to inform and continue to educate ourselves, and that is how we model for the community. And it is not ever detracting from our overall goals of all of our students.
I agree with you, Sarah, that the goal to bring the community along in the work, and I really value and appreciate that. It's part of the reason why I continue to bring this up as a conversation, is because I feel as though our community does not engage in this conversation in a way that allows us to come along together. So I also am very, very clear on the levels, the different levels of understanding that people have when it comes to the term systemic and institutional racism, as well as white privilege, as well as words that are not in here, like white supremacy ideology, right, and culture, which if we are to move along this work, along this line, as leaders that Oak Park insists on being, as a community, we insist on being an integrated community that is about us being able to work together. Your point to us being able to do it in community is extremely important. So if we do this work in levels for ourselves, and begin to, as a board, start to unpack what systemic, the dimensions of racism, systemic, institutionalized, and then we can model what it means to have these conversations, then I think that that will in essence be bringing the community along. If the problem is the word, the term specifically, white privilege, and we are afraid to say that word, or afraid to use that term because it may be alienating, then I'm concerned about our effectiveness long-term in a racial equity policy, because that piece is going to be a piece of it. But in the interest of ensuring that everyone understands what we're doing, and that the goal of this work is really to build community in new ways that we have not explored yet, I would be willing for us to remove that term if it would make people feel more comfortable, if comfort is what we're going for here. But the key pieces I think that are important for us in our work as a board, is that we begin to have the conversations about systemic and institutional racism, because as a school board, we are representative of systems, and systemic and institutional racism exists in our organization that we are elected to govern. And so I would just appreciate us being able to include the community in the conversation, as well as bring the community along in understanding of what those terms mean, and how we can more effectively work together to have the conversation, and not in a way of alienating. That is never my intent for alienation, and I understand that everyone comes to the work in a different way, but I think that what we're specifically talking about here is the racial equity goals, and in order for us to effectively evaluate, look at, and be change makers in racial equity goals, we really need to know what racial equity means. And that's, those are, those are all big pieces of it.
Certainly, on the systemic racism and the institutional racism, there's no question but that the data keep confirming that that's an issue in this very specific school.
And community?
And community. But we can't, you know, we're school board members. Our responsibility is to create a school environment that's free of those things.
Right, but I just.
We can lead for the community, but we can't, we can't necessarily change the community, and that's not our charge.
Of course.
So I want to, I want to get to our, I would like to get to our charge, and I would like to finish my thought.
I'm going to go for it.
Thank you. So, I, backing away from the words, I don't think is necessary. I think being comfortable talking about them is. I think we need to supplement them with an assurance to the community that this is about all our students at the end of the day, and that if we build a truly equitable system, and one that through a race lens no longer has institutional racism against non-whites, that that is also going to be beneficial for our white students. So that this is not moving away from a commitment to ensuring our white students are welcome, that our white students are going to have a positive environment. This is just addressing what all the data clearly show us currently exists as a systemically and institutionally racist system that has singled out black and brown kids for inequitable treatment. And there's no walking away from that data, and I think we have to lead on that. So it's not necessarily even the words themselves, it's, I think we have to talk about all those things. So I'm on a little different path, but I think we have to balance it with letting everyone know that we represent all the students that attend this school, and we're building an environment that's going to be good for all the students that attend.
Can I just ask a quick question, just for clarification? So as a person of color, your comment about we want to make sure that our white community understands that their students are equally as important as the students of color, is that what I'm hearing? Yeah, because in our community, there's a perception that if we have racial equity goals, that we will lose sight of our white students, and our students of color will get some form of preferential treatment, because that's a prevailing idea, right?
Misperception.
Misperception, mis- misperception. So I agree with that, but the piece that I just want to make sure that we are clear on is that we are, I understand that we are stewards of this board for this school, but this board and this school does not operate independently of what's happening in the community, and what's happening in the community is what we see happening in the school. So this is not, although, yes, that's where our purview is, this conversation is not only limited to what we would be demonstrating as possible for the community. So I think that's an important piece as well. But the ideas of fear around loss, especially when we begin to have conversations around privilege, is a very important piece for us to address, because it is deemed as a loss. And so I appreciate your comment in that, Ralph. It's just, I don't want us to, I don't want us to lose sight of this larger thing that we're all getting to be a part of.
Right, no, and we went down that same path once again on the other side of Harlem, facing the same issue.
Did you see it tonight too, Ralph?
I'm trying to, I'm talking, I'm going to eat this.
There's your stage voice.
We need better, we invest in better microphones, can the district do that? So, I completely agree with everything, Jim. I mean, what you said is the process we follow, but you don't, you don't win hearts and minds of people with very different worldviews and people who aren't trained if they are alienated from the get-go. So we need to find ways to engage them, and I think that's important.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah, we're saying the exact same thing, and you know what, you know, I've gone through trainings. I mean, I understand it at very basic level, and my worldview, white privilege is simple. I never have to walk in and assume that I might not get alone because of the color of my skin. I never have to have that fear, right? And I could, I could forget the fact that I'm white from an identity standpoint, because it's not going to disadvantage me in any way if I forget that fact. And my understanding from everyone through all these trainings is someone who is non-white doesn't have that privilege of walking into any situation and assuming their race isn't going to be used against them. So it's a constant issue. That's a big deal, but most of the world doesn't get it yet, and we've got to find a way to bring most of the world along with us on this train.
Well, just our community, since our purview and all, right, not the whole world.
Well, they're reflecting.
I feel the need to say something, and I am going to try to be as diplomatic and politically correct as I possibly can. It may not come across that way, but as I am sitting here listening to the board talk about the board goals. about the board goals, at the end of the day, when it comes to the implementation of their goals, this administration, we have to realize that we are never, not just in Oak Park and River Falls, going to bring everyone along to our frame of thinking. We have to realize that not just in Oak Park and River Falls, there are going to be people who are not going to be happy with whatever we do. When we talk about language and people feeling comfortable, as a woman of color, I am often exposed to language from people in this community that is not comfortable for me, yet no one censors that language for me. My position doesn't get that language censored. My skin is colored is what gives that language issue to me by people who think that's okay. So if we are truly a school district that is, oh, this is emotional for me, if we are truly a school district that said that we are committed to removing the barriers, not for just our kids of color, but for every kid, that's what we say every single day, conversations about race are difficult. And it appears to me, and I hope I'm wrong, that we are talking about soft stepping around that language to make others comfortable, to bring them along with us when they could care less about making us comfortable or our children comfortable. For people to say to me that it is not the children in D-90 that are bringing our scores down, it's the students in D-97, and that it is not my job to educate them because they come to us like that and this is not a utopia. To me, that was privileged for someone to feel that they could say that to me as the person charged with educating every single child that walks in this building. Yet I was supposed to maintain my composure so they're not to offend them. If we are truly committed to doing the work we say we're going to do, I am not by any means saying we don't attempt to bring the people along with us, but at some point in time, we have to move forward. And that's what we're committed to whether they follow us or not.
I agree. I think, thank you for sharing that.
I just needed to, to say that as the person you, you hired to do this work, and in my initial interview, I said this work is hard. So I just needed to say that because I know each of you are getting emails, but we are getting them too. And I've had people watch in my office and threaten to take me to the press and take my job. I've had people to tell me I need to go back to Missouri, but they don't curb their language. That to me is privilege. And if we are going to do the work, that's all I'm saying, we try to bring them along, but it's like with anything, you never get 100%. If it was 100%, we wouldn't even be having this conversation at 2019.
And I don't think we should even try to get 100%. And, and, and so that's not, that's not the goal. The goal is to change this system first within this building so that those kinds of things don't happen within this building for our students. And the second is to bring as many folks in the community around to that as well. And so we got unbelievable pushback in D-90 when we first started the Equity Initiative. And I would say by probably close to, if not a majority of the community. And I would say by the third year of the Equity Initiative, we had the substantial majority of the community behind us. And that makes changing that building much more of a realistic goal to attain. So it's, it's important that you make the effort to get the community to come along. But Joylyn, I, I completely agree that there are those who are not gonna get. And I would, I would actually categorize the comments you've got, not as white privilege, but as outright racist. I, I don't see white, I see pure racism there. And we called that out when we needed to call it out in D-90. So you have to move forward for what's best for all of our students. And the only thing that an Equity Initiative makes very clear is best for all of our students is that we eliminate those kinds of situations in this building.
Jackie, did you want to add something?
Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering where we're landing on what we need to do because we have passed a racial equity policy. We're talking about racial equity and it is something that, Ralph, to your point, it, we're trying to eliminate disparity, but I guess what I'm wondering is, are we all on the, the same page that, that path requires us to increase our comfort and literacy around talking about race?
Yes.
And that is the goal of a board and our school community. And to Joylyn's point and to Gina's point, being concerned about how we come across, I think that cart is, uh, that horse is out of the barn or whatever the metaphor is because we passed the racial equity policy. The work we have to do as a board to be informed and to understand what it's going to take to stay courageous in this work is, is time and effort and it is much like what we, what we need our, our students and our black and brown students to see, that we are championing a cause that brings everybody along, but isn't Joylyn's language soft, peddling, or backing away from hard conversations? So I'm just asking, are we in agreement that we passed the racial equity policy and we need to do this work and there are going to be those naysayers, those that are concerned, those that wonder, and part of this work will be to confirm and reassure that racial equity means that we are ensuring that all of our students get what they need and that we, it is not a zero-sum game? But we have to have those conversations.
Yeah, obviously, Jackie, you can't see us, but I don't think anybody would disagree with what you said. Um, my, my only thought, and perhaps I shouldn't have brought it up, but my only thought was I, I just don't want us to start having, putting barriers in our own way to getting the work done. Uh, I mean, I think our, our commitment as a school board has been very clear. Um, and I certainly think that we have put a lot of steps in place to make sure that we are furthering our goal of racial equity. We certainly have more to do. I just don't want us to get in our own way in trying to do it. I guess that's what I was, I was saying. But I mean, I don't have personally any problem with any of the wording in here. Um, if anybody else wants to jump in?
Um, I'll guess, I will just, from, from my perspective, a couple of things, and I don't wanna go on for a long time, but, you know, I respect the, all the opinions that have been put out there, I expect, I respect the emotion that's in them and I understand them. But I also know that in my own experience down this path, as, as I've learned, as a white male, I go through emotion just like everybody else. And I have emotions that are different than some of the emotions expressed here. And I think it is a very good point that while we have very important work to do that is hard and that we have to use language to do it, if we alienate people at the very beginning by putting language out there, they don't understand, we lose them before they get in the door. But that's my opinion.
Who are the people we're losing? I, I'm unclear, are we talking about our students? Who are we losing?
We're losing my neighbors who want to understand this, who want to understand, but they don't understand the language.
So how do we get this to understand the language if we don't talk about the language?
I, I think we need to talk about the language and we need to invite people into a safe community, to a safe space, and we need to have a conversation about these things. I don't want to invite them into a space that they perceive is a conflict before they walk into it.
And I am asking, so what does that look like? Because we're going to be talking about racial equity and race. So what, and it would, I mean, there's no attempt to, to make this adversarial and, you know, fear and discomfort are very different things. So I'm just trying to understand what words do we keep out or tone down in an effort to have a discussion about racial equity? And it's a very real question. I'm trying to imagine what that looks like and I don't understand.
I, I think we've talked about, you know, is, is it necessary, for my, my own person, is it necessary to start this conversation with words like white privilege or white supremacy as a context of the conversation? Is it, I understand the importance of those terms in the conversation, I just don't understand why I start the conversation.
I don't think we're anyone suggesting that that's how we start the conversation. And if that has been the message, then that is not what's intended.
So, so I think writing that down in our goal as one of 15 or 15 words, when somebody reads it out of context, that is, those are the words that they read.
So Craig, are you saying that the words, the word that was sticked-
Are you saying that people are zeroing in on white privilege?
I, I think people do. I think people like me who come to this uneducated and I know how I started, yes.
So as a board goal, what would you suggest that it say?
I, I don't know without spending some time reworking on it, but I would try not to lead, I would try to take some of those words out, maybe the same issue in the Equity Policy, try to make the language more-
Palatable.
Palatable. I don't wanna say more inclusive because obviously taking it out makes it less inclusive and I get that, but I wanna make it more palatable. I don't wanna create an adversarial space before I start.
And when you say more palatable, and I, you know, you all know that I'm at this specific education courageous conversations about race conference, so I've been speaking this eight to five since Saturday. And I'll just say that when we say make it more palatable, we're talking about making it more palatable to our white folks in our community, correct?
Maybe more palatable to the people who are educated or haven't spent eight to five talking about it and developing their own ability to have the conversation regardless of whether-
Because, well, I, I'm not sure that's accurate because the conversations that I've had with the black and brown folks in our community as well as the folks that were on our racial equity policy committee and that come to CCB and my, you know, lived experience in Oak Park is that it feels like we're talking about the white people in our community. And if we are, then we need to talk about what that is. The folks that are representative of the, the racial equity work that we're doing and the disparities we're trying to close are flying out for these conversations. Our students have named it. And I'm asking us as a board, how do we move into this work so that we're informed and the fear that we're having about what people may think or those that aren't as far along, that this is our opportunity to delve into this work in a way that reflects the policies that we already passed and the work that we say we wanna do. And it is uncomfortable. So I just wanna make sure when we're saying make it more palatable, that we are clear on what image we have of making it more palatable for who. And we need to put that to each other.
I have a question.
Yes.
What, what we're talking about is our board's goal, right? And for our team, right, of seven, who are going to be doing this work, is the term white privilege okay for our team to do our work, like independent of the community and the, and the conversation? And in light of, you know, I, I, I appreciate that this is very hard for white people who have never had an experience of talking about these terms and having this conversation. And I'm super appreciative, having done trainings like this in Southern Illinois, of not turning people off and making sure that we have the conversation in a way that allows people to come into the conversation. And I only reference Southern Illinois because it's totally different demographic down there. So I know that there is a way for us to have a conversation that allows people to come into it. I'm also mindful of us shying away from some of the terms that we're actually going to need to discuss as our team. So what I'm needing clarity on is, is our team willing to have conversations about institutional racism and white privilege and deepen on our understanding of that in an effort to be able to be those people who have conversations with the larger community about what it truly means, how it shows up, and how it can be different? Or how, how when we talk about racial equity, we're not talking about eliminating anything for white students because that's, that's not what we're doing? So I'm just curious if our team is able to have that conversation and do we feel like we could have that language in there? Or is having that language, having the term white privilege be in our, one of our board goals, going to be too alienating for our team to get past? Because the community, we can work on, but like, I just need to know for us.
I'll suggest that for our team, or for me, which is the only person I can speak for here, I'm very comfortable with that language in there and exploring what that means for us and for me and for this board and for our students.
Yeah, and I, when I made my comments, I made it clear that I have no problem with those words in our board bubble. What I thought should also be added to the board bubble is just the emphasis that we still, this is a process about all our students. That this is a process about all our students. I, I don't want students to feel like they're being left behind or parents of students to feel like it's zero sum because that creates a lot of unnecessary antipathy toward accomplishing the goal. And as the board turns over, a future board may run specifically to overturn the goal. And what I'm trying to do is make sure the system's change actually takes place and we are effective in accomplishing the goal. As far as using those words for us, I, even- As far as using those words for us, even in my prior comments, I'm comfortable with that from my standpoint.
Yeah, so I want to, I, I want to weigh in. Um, I very much so, uh, as, as an individual and as a member of this board with the words. So, just to put a, a voice to it. Um, as I look at this goal, um, I've got outlined the equity lens underlying. So, so we've talked about, to me, there's, um, embedded in this goal is, um, education and learning, um, both collectively and individually, which I support and agree needs to be done. But what I hope to see out of this goal is, what does the racial, what does it look like as a, as this board to look at all of the work that we do through a racial equity lens? That's what, that's the target that I, I have, but what, when we, what does that mean? So, um, in all of our work, and one lens that we're all looking through.
Matt, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I haven't spoken on this yet. So, I support the verbiage that is, whoa, hello. And I support the verbiage. Um, you know, I know that there's some thought that's been given about maybe inserting a phrase that emphasizes or underscores the point that this is for all students. I, I, I'm not sure if I feel we need to do that enough, but I'm open to seeing some attempt at, at phrasing that incorporates that to make that abundantly clear. That's kind of implicit all that we do, so maybe that's somewhere else in this document. Um, I don't think it has to be so next to a phrase here to, you know, overstate that point perhaps. Um, because, you know, maybe the only thing I was wondering is whether to capitalize white or not. I mean, that's, that's the graver guy in me, so I'll let other minds figure that one out. Um, and, um, so yeah, so I'm just fully supportive. Not everyone's going to get on the bus. The electric Kool-Aid acid test, is that a book that we teach at the school? Hang on. So, um, yeah, I, I agree that there's our seven-member group, and as one of those members, I don't see any reason to back off any of this, these words or phrases. And I'm also open to any additional insights on something here. And I think it is important, important to get this as close as, you know, as where we want it as possible. At the same time, this is a gateway for more, so I don't want to agonize over it either.
One thing I just want to add for point B, uh, do individual work to increase racial liter, racial equity literacy? I think it may be helpful for us to have a little bit more definition to that, like what does that look like? What sorts of individual work, you know, subject matters as to what effective individual work might look like, et cetera? I think that would be helpful. Do we feel like we can move on to the next one? Four, which I think is less mean. Uh, continual oversight of district policies, assessment of review and monitoring policies by the policy committee.
Feels so easy to move on.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are we good?
That was to Tom and, uh, Ralph's point about, uh, our reviewing in a more, um, I guess intentional way beyond the press update on our policy. And I think since we have gone to the committee as a whole, when we had the standalone policy committee, it was a little more, uh, intentional, um, but I was trying to honor that, uh, request. So, I don't know if it makes sense or not, but that was the intent.
Yeah, I think it's workable as drafted. I think it captures the essence of what I was talking about. We need to have these procedures in place that we know. Tom, are you comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, you just kind of added a word procedure because, because this one is a process-type goal, which is that there needs to be, we need assurance that the policies that we have in place are being monitored and, and being adhered to through some discipline. So, yes, these words can capture it.
All right, well, I think, um, this is maybe one of the most useful equity discussions we've had before. Um, Jackie, did you want to add something? I didn't cut you off.
Did you say it again?
I just want to make sure that I wasn't speaking over you.
Oh, no.
So it sounds like we have at least, um, a commitment to do further equity work, perhaps at a retreat, um, so maybe we can start thinking about when would be a good time for that and what topics to cover, uh, specifically in terms of our equity work.
And Joylyn and I have, um, are in the, in conversations of, um, and have asked, um, Dr. Ammons to help with that, as well as, uh, Gina, and from the standpoint of their areas of expertise. Uh, and I do want to say that, um, I appreciate that our board is willing to have conversations like this. Uh, I have, once again, will reference where I've been the last few days and say that, um, I'm proud of the work that we do and that we're willing to have our conversations. Because I've seen a lot of folks that, um, are very, very far behind even addressing these kind of conversations. So, it's hard, but we do it with respect and integrity, and I, I appreciate that.
Do we have any future agenda items?
I think we have hold on.
Right, and yeah, maybe they can go through a laundry list. Any others that have not been mentioned?
Just, uh, as the team went through them today, trying to see what's been done, what's still outstanding, there were a couple we needed classification on. I think we figured out some. Uh, one was the IGAU talking points that came up in a meeting, and it says that we saw, I know Matt, you went to the IGAU meeting?
A few months ago, it was the last one I was able to meet up.
And so we were just wondering, um, because there's an IGAU meeting, I think, for November 2nd. Is there something that we need to bring forward to the board in preparation?
So, I'll convey that. So, so it sounds like you're asking me to ask those folks at IGAU, what is expected of you and your team?
Because, um...
For the November team.
There are times we're invited and times we're not, and just trying to make sure that if we're invited. The, uh, other thing that we needed clarification on, Sarah, I believe you brought it up at one point, and that was tied to the recommendation from the TRA equity committee. There was, there was some discussion among the board about the recommendations, and then I believe the board or reference to go back and have a conversation and see where the other boards were. And so, we just, we don't know how to proceed. We are working on the data, um, the data share, because that's, that's also quite a strategic plan, but was, we weren't sure with those three recommendations. I think that was out of the discussion where the boards are.
Yeah, um, because I, you know, the TRA board equity committee now, this is what, the 30th, I think, that we are in now? Um, and I, I worry that there's not a whole lot of teeth, right, to some of these things, that they're just sort of aspirational or suggestions. Um, and so, I think that perhaps our board especially needs to be sort of a champion of some of these initiatives because we do straddle both boards, both, uh, both districts, districts. So, um, I just, I don't know how we do that, and I was just more putting it out there to make sure that it's at least in our consciousness and maybe we can think of a way to be a little bit more proactive in terms of bringing everyone together.
D-97 never endorsed though, correct? So it's just D-90 and D-200 that endorsed anyway.
Well, I would have to check on that. I'm not sure that that is accurate as to both sets of recommendations for year one and year two.
Um, we also had the five essentials on here, and our goal is to bring that forth in November, along with, um, an update on the state report card. We're going to do those collectively. There's a lot in, in progress that we're working on. One of the requests was made to also have, go back to periodic reports on each division. And so, we're, we're going to try to get those scheduled. We know this is the year to review MENTH, and so that's scheduled for May, the MENTH program. That's our outside. Also, for May is, and just an update on where we are, since we're no longer EO at school, but an update on our processes for getting more students in AP. We do have policy review and impact on students out here as well, particularly on students with free and reduced lunch is one of the things that we were asked. As I said, data share, we're working on that, and we're going to bring that. Um, the deadline to have the data share completed is in December, so our goal is to finalize and bring it to February 4th. So those are just some, uh, the outstanding items. Uh, and I know there was some discussion for the board about more work around equity, so everybody's a little green. We're going to start.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, did you clarify?
I'm sorry. Sarah, you also asked about, um, agreeing into our construction project, and so, as you know, we've gone with green energy, but there's some more things. So our update for that is scheduled for later.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted, there was a mention earlier, I thought I heard the word chapters in connection with the book. Are there some chapters that we should read first and foremost, or is it the entire book?
One, two, three.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Books are faster.
Yep, okay.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? A second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.